Um, please, Morris wants us to dial. We're dialing him.
I was really before he emailed to me. Yeah, I didn't realize he took up so much paper. I would have said that to him, but my God, it's wild.
Okay, item one, call to order. I would like to call to order the Garden Valley School District number seventy-one. School board meeting is Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, six oh three P M. Item number two, can I have a roll call?
From here, George Simpson.
Hi, I'm Peters. Hello, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, we just started. Yep. Okay, Morris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Okay, item number three, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the end of justice. Okay, item number four, approve and adopt agenda. Do I have a motion to approve and adopt the agenda?
Madam Chairwoman, I will make a motion that we approve and adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Item number five, consent agenda. Item A, approve approval of minutes. November eighth, board meeting minutes. November sixteenth, special board meeting minutes. November thirtieth, work session minutes. And November thirtieth, special board meeting minutes.
Madam Chairwoman, I have moved that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item B, the treasurer's report.
Item two, that's all excepted together.
That was all the consent.
Oh, it's all together. All right, item number six, informational session and discussion with Boise County Emergency Management and Red Cross.
Okay, uh, we have Trina Richardson here from Boise County. And um, I'll let her introduce herself, kind of tell you what her role is. And if you'll just kind of come a little closer so they can hear you at home, that's the microphone there.
Okay.
And um, she'll kind of give us a little overview of what we're looking at from a safe haven standpoint and answer any questions you have. And we have a contact with the Red Cross that she can get more information with. So.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, this is the first one that I've been involved with, and so I may not have answers to all the questions. But and Barbara Weaver is our contact with Red Cross, and she unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight. She just got back from Hurricane Ian and then also had an A I A A R for a flood that had happened in Montana tonight, so. She's a busy woman, but um, you'll hear us.
Could you state your name again, please?
I'm sorry, Trina Richardson, Boise County Emergency Manager. Um, we refer to it as an emergency shelter with Red Cross and everything. And um, it was a few years ago, they had gone through the process and they'd already had the school evaluated and it passed, there wasn't any issues, there wasn't any additional things that had to be done in order for this to be an emergency shelter. Um, there was some paperwork that was left here with, I don't know whom, and she can't recall with whom. But the paperwork never made it back to Red Cross. So really, the only thing that has to be done is the paperwork. I have asked her to send me a copy, she's been so busy, she has not been able to. She's going to send it to Randy and myself as soon as she's able to.
Okay.
But outside of that, the questions I did ask her, there's um, basically, the school doesn't charge a fee in order for it to be used as an emergency shelter. Red Cross will provide anything that is needed as far as food, cots, um, sleeping bags, any items that are needed, depending on what our event is. I know right now, we don't have a generator here. Unfortunately, a few years ago, generators, there was grants for them, there is not right now. They have gone away from that due to maintenance and upkeep and things, they just don't find it feasible to fund the generators. But Boise County does have a large generator that we could bring from Idaho City over to here in the event that we needed to do that. Um, I've worked with Dave a little bit on that as far as um, he was looking into what attachments and things would be needed so that it would be here, we could basically pull it over, plug it in, and go. Red Cross would do an eval um, with someone from the school prior to coming in, just noting like if there was any damage or anything. So if they were gonna use this as a room, you know, just a pre, and then afterwards they would as well. If there were any damage to the school, Red Cross would take care of that. So outside of that, that's the information her and I discussed, but do you guys have specific questions that I may be able to answer?
With the Idaho City generator, is that like a shared generator or do they?
It's spare. It's Boise County Emergency Management's. So in the event that we had multiple emergencies going.
Right.
Knock on wood, we haven't had that in the past. Um, that could be an issue. But it is emergency management to be able to use where needed.
Okay.
And you were talking about the supplies and things that could be available through Red Cross. Are these stored at a facility in Boise County, or are these come from a different?
They come from Red Cross, they have a trailer, basically, that's all they're ready to go.
Hmm, okay.
Okay.
Do you know on the generator, Trina, would it run the entire school, or do you know how much, what the capacity is or anything on that?
It's an extremely large generator, I don't know if you're familiar with that.
So those are the pictures you sent me of the generator, I forwarded those pictures to Rick Fowes, our electricity school. And it was his, uh, he said that that generator would not be sufficient to run the entire school. So by looking at pictures, so I mean, if that, if this came about, we probably would have at least have to look into that further.
So if we look into connections for this generator, we would obviously have to take care of the well, you know, it's major areas in the school like this room, if it's gonna be a shelter, you know. Um, would, how would we fund, you know, coming up with those hookups and all, would that be something that Red Cross could fund for us, or?
I would have to look into that, I don't know.
Okay. Can you ask them about that?
Is the school zoned currently, like is there different areas where you could supply power to it?
Uh, maybe, I don't know.
I would think so.
I would think so, yeah, I just don't know.
Cause that could be an option too, where that generator would be large enough, but that's outside of my expertise, we'll have to definitely get with some other people and find out.
So that would be one question I would have, is could Red Cross help us with getting that set up, you know, in terms of being plugged in late?
Well, do funding and things of that nature, but those are things that we keep a cut theme on.
Okay, okay. All right.
Okay, that gives us a good basis to start with. Appreciate your time. Any more questions?
No, I'm good. The paperwork's been resubmitted.
It's going to be, I have not seen it yet, she was gonna try to have it to me before tonight, and I haven't received it.
Okay.
So as soon as I have it, you'll have it.
I'll get it, I'll share it with the board, and then we'll have it.
If you have any questions, let me know, and we could probably get Barbara on a phone call, or she also said at the next meeting, if she's able, but her schedule, so it's hard for her to schedule for sure.
Yeah. Do you know, just another question quickly, that is Idaho City Basin School District or Horseshoe Bend, are they designated as shelters, do you know?
Um, Idaho City is not designated as a shelter, up there, we use the senior center.
Okay.
Um, and the senior center does have a generator, all that's set up as far as that goes. We would have used it at the school in the event that we needed it, but they haven't gone through the whole process.
Okay.
Horseshoe Bend went through the evaluation, there were some things they had to do, and then um, I was actually really thankful that you guys contacted me in regards to this, because I was under the assumption, which is bad, that all those were done, so it started the ball to make sure that we're covered in each area.
Okay.
Great, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Morris, did you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
All right, item number seven, delegations and reports. Um, A, superintendent report, Randy Thompson.
Okay, you have a copy of this in your packet, and I'll forward it to an email, I don't know if Morris can pull that up, but um, just wanted to cover a few brief things tonight. Um, back at, in November, uh, we participated in a rural education conference at Boise State. We took two of our senior students, uh, Gertie Furman and Grace Castillo, uh, they did a wonderful job, they sat on panels, answered questions. Uh, I've gotten two to three different contacts from others, one at ISBA, another superintendent, and the professor, uh, the de- professor Boise State, what how impressed they were with these kids and how well they did, so we were really proud of them, they did a wonderful job. The second one, Ian Gee, remember, we spoke with him at our work session?
Yeah.
Um, he emailed me yesterday, he said that Terry Tucker's working up a cost for the services, that was one of the questions we had for him, is how much would it cost us in terms of monthly service or whatever, so he's working on that, they don't have numbers yet for us. And he has a meeting with Mountain Water Works next week to talk through some things with them. So he said he will, he just wanted to give us a quick status update, they'll be providing more information.
Okay.
Um, number three, uh, Lisa Colondura, who came and met with us and did the training, board training. Um, she emailed the surveys, we forwarded that to you, it's also in your packet. Um, we are starting to go through them, uh, looking at the comments, at the responses and all. Uh, she has some recommendations for next steps, the first two, which would be to get our leadership team together and identify focus areas. And um, maybe create some goal statements from the surveys. So uh, after the Christmas break, we will jump on that and get that rolling and start having some meetings there. Uh, number four, uh, you guys had asked us about, uh, Gabe and I to research the formation of a committee for this, okay? So we uh, we talked with ISBA and did some research. We basically have three options, and that's what I listed as one, two, and three there. The first option is that the board forms a committee, okay? And the, the thing she said for us to remember, if we want this committee to make a recommendation as to which path to take, then this is required, that's the option we need to go with, it needs to be a board formed committee. Now, when you form a committee from the board, open meeting law will apply, so their meetings will be open to the public, uh, there'll be a board member on it. Um, there will be similar procedures to a regular board meeting, but not the same. Uh, there'll be no action items to vote on, you know, any agenda items to vote on or anything, but uh, someone will need to take notes per se, but uh, and the biggest thing is we'll have to notice these meetings, so that there's adequate notice. Now, if, if we form a committee and we want to say this committee's gonna meet the third Tuesday of every month from now until June, we can do one notice and set that up as a regular schedule, but what, how will we decide to do that, okay? The second option would be that the superintendent forms a committee, um, but this committee cannot make a recommendation as to what to do. This committee can only research and provide you with all the information so that you can then make a decision, okay? The only time a committee can recommend something is when the board forms a committee, okay? Um, open meeting law would not apply to a superintendent's committee. Uh, there has to be, there's no requirement for notice or anything, so it can be just, you know, at my discretion when we've been meeting on. And then the third option is to use number two, the superintendent committee, and make it public meetings, so that people can have input and be a part of the process. So those are basically our three options. So I think you guys just need to kind of mull it over, decide which way you want to go. Um, you know, if you really want the committee to make a recommendation, that's fine and great, we just need to understand they will be operating under those rules, okay? And a decision ought to be made right now, it's just something to think about, and we can have it as an action item in the next month's meeting if you want. All right?
Thank you for looking up, Morris.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, number five, uh, we have had three classified employees resign over the last several weeks, I'm just making you aware of these. Uh, this doesn't require any board action, uh, but I just wanted you to be aware that Stephanie Korn, Bryce Martin, and Gary Van Dyke resigned and are no longer working at the school, so. Um, number six, enrollment numbers. Uh, we're two eighty-four, which includes pre-K, uh, as of December first. Um, number seven, budget update. Um, I put a copy of the email from last week where, uh, I don't know if you've had a chance to study or look at that, where um, Lydia and Gabe did the uh, income operating statement, and then I did a little analysis of kind of where we are year to date and what we're on track to spend, and the opportunity that we have, if we can hit that target, I mentioned, we could refund that general fund balance back up to where it was. So we have a real opportunity to hit that with some good expense control, okay? And then uh, legislative update number eight, uh, I'm going to a meeting tomorrow uh, with our Region Three Superintendent Association, where we will be prioritizing and um, sharing our priorities with uh, some legislatures. All the legislators from our districts have been invited, we'll see who shows up, but we'll try to have some face time with them and uh, get them ready for the session, so. Any questions?
No, I don't have any right now.
None that I have right now either.
Okay, thank you.
Morris?
Oh.
Uh, Randy, are you gonna change this meeting with the legislature?
Yes, tomorrow, yes.
Um, what issue would you be raising with that?
Uh, the biggest one uh, that affects us, um, we feel like is uh, having adequate funding to fund our school and not have to constantly go to our local taxpayers asking for money. So it's gonna be around the funding formula, recommendations that are being made. Um, that and being able to maintain our facilities are, are really some of the biggest costs that we face. Um, so those are some of the biggies that I'm bringing up. Is there anything you'd like for me to share?
Yeah, and the letter, if I can simplify that, you know, it's, it's become really complicated, and in the past, it was just um, qualification and how many years you served and the lineups you got to what a teacher would earn. But right now, they play that ladder so complicated, it's, it's really difficult to figure out.
Okay, I will definitely.
More money for our teachers, you know, uh, being in, in a rural situation, because often if you go with a big group of superintendents, uh, the bigger districts have more sway as to, and, and more time. Uh, with the smaller districts, especially the rural districts, uh, it's really difficult to finance our teachers. Um, and if you go with the formula that they have in place right now, it, it disadvantages the, the rural districts. And so that's something that I'd like to see if they can output that, you know, instead of the, the big issues that the big schools are going, but uh, you know, somebody needs to be speaking for the, the small rural schools and the rural school districts.
Okay.
Yeah, those are good, Morris.
Yeah, that's great, Morris.
Absolutely. I just thought one other thing, Madam Chairwoman, if I can.
Yeah.
You guys saw the letter that I sent out to the community about the lunch issue, but we have had an overwhelming response. Uh, we've already funded about six months, the next six months, so we're in a really good position now to help these kids and make sure no kid goes without eating, so.
Good.
I meant to put that on my update for guys, so.
You hear that, Morris?
Yes.
Okay.
Lots of different people.
Yep, excellent.
Okay, all right, does anybody have any further questions? Okay, um, principal's report, Dr. Stephen Lynch.
Hi, everyone, um, I believe you have this uh, visual in front of you, just want to review this and then a couple other items uh, on our, on our end. Randy talked about Bryce Martin leaving the position, he resigned, and this actually graph um, actually shows that despite the fact that he left, our student incidents are actually down, so the, he left right before Thanksgiving, and the week after Thanksgiving, we had ten incidents, and then week seventeen, which is last week, we had, I believe, eighteen. And this week, the number is very low. I want to give the credit to the setup and the work that's been done by Mr. Martin, because he did a fantastic, outstanding job. And I believe that while it's taking us a little while, I believe that the teachers, their classroom management can be attributed to the lower number of incidents, because it is being handled in-house or within the classroom, so really want to give acknowledgements uh, to where they are due. Now, along the same lines, we have three interviews set up tomorrow for the ISS position. And applicants have a strong background, so we are very confident that we will find one, and offer the position to one of the three, uh, probably on Thursday, you know, so that is our intended goal.
Would they be starting after Christmas break?
It is after Christmas break, correct, and um, that position is still absolutely essential, we want to make sure that the incidents are down. And uh, there is a, a tremendous outcome that we have had, we have addressed incidents and behaviors in the classroom. The next step for us, the next logical step is now the academic instructional piece from the teachers to the students. Because we have, the graph has shown that it started off slow, but then it got pretty high and it's dropping. And when the incidents are under control, when behaviors are managed properly, then we can really address our attention and focus and energy towards instruction. And this is the work that I'm really looking forward to, just because it is desperately needed, and it's something that I'm really curious to see the capacity of not only the students, but then teachers at the same time. Um, any questions with regards to this?
No, I cannot say enough though about how well this has been done and how great it is to have it in a graphic format where you can actually see these things progress over time or regress, so this has been fantastic, that you guys got all of this implemented at the beginning of this year too.
Well, I, I think for me, I, I really wanted to make sure that the recognition goes to the teachers and every single staff member who is taking the time, because it is time consuming and tedious. And while not, we don't have a hundred percent, they do enough to capture enough of an idea. And so thank you for the teachers and staff for taking the time, and the person that really needs the credit on this, I say this over and over and over, but Kevin Hennessy is brilliant, he's a scary person when it comes to technology and data, so I really want to make sure that he gets the love that he deserves.
Yeah, he has done a wonderful job. And, and Dr. Lynch's leadership has really made a difference in this area, so.
It's all, I, I really feel it's all coming together.
It's coming, I agree with you, um, I mentioned this to the staff the other day, there's a peace and then a, a quiet peace, but then a loud confidence that we're getting there. It might be slow right now, but I'm very confident in our, in our approach, in our systems, and most importantly, in the staff that we have. I think that they are understanding the work that is in front of us, it is a lot of work and serious work, but they are absolutely devoted, and it is coming. So please be patient with us, but we are, we feel good about it. Any other? Uh, I just wanted to mention one other thing, we have um, the senior leadership team or the school leadership team, plus a couple other important people that we have asked to participate in the meeting, we are looking at ways to improve the offerings and the opportunities and one's experience at Garden Valley School District. So the hundreds of meetings that I have sat in with parents and students, while they have been very hard at times, the information that they have relayed to me is that they simply need more and they simply need better, and it's taken us seventeen weeks to identify what those needs are. And with that in mind, we are really gonna start to hone in and really get it detailed, so that we can actually put some of it into play for spring semester, but more realistically, twenty-three and twenty-four. And um, we'll have a couple meetings, but then we're gonna present this to Superintendent Thompson. Uh, we want to make sure that the financial aspect is something that we can cover without burdening the tax, taxpayers, and then before that, or after that, our superintendent Thompson will present this information to you, so we're really excited. Um, just a couple of the things that we're looking at is expanding our advanced opportunities and then looking at the C T E, because that has been a resounding um, item that the community members and the students have asked for, we want to make sure that the pathways that they want is something that we are able to offer, and once again, the only time will allow us to do that, so that is really on the dot, and that's our, our single most priority for the spring semester.
Great.
Excellent.
I'm not sure, you good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, community forum on agenda items, Gabe, did we have any?
So we, we actually did have one, but it was not on an agenda item, so I informed them that I would talk about possibly getting the item on the January agenda, and then they could possibly speak to him, or they could submit it in the format, but nothing for tonight.
Number, item nine, new business, A, discuss and possibly approve revisions for policy twenty-two thousand two hundred, twenty-two hundred.
So you have a copy of this in your packet, and this is basically, you remember, we just did the updated holidays two months ago? We're just adding those into this section of this policy where it talks about holidays, so.
This is where we'd already been doing them, we're just.
Right, exactly. So it's just updating this particular policy for that.
Yeah, we discussed this a couple months ago.
Yes.
Do you hear that, Morris? Okay, I move that we approve the revisions to policy twenty-two hundred as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved denied policy sixteen hundred, it's an annual review.
This is the code of ethics for board members, this is one that has to be adopted annually, so.
I remember reviewing this with Lisa.
All of us have just signed it.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and pass?
Make a motion that we approve uh, regulation sixteen hundred.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye. C, discuss the results of the Garden Valley School District Strategic Planning Survey.
Yes. So this is just an opportunity, if you guys wanted to talk about anything you've read so far, I haven't been able to dive into all of it. I'm, I'm looking at the results, I'm also trying to look through the comments for any specific things we need to quickly address, but I just top line looked at everything, and I noticed that the overwhelming theme was safety was number one. So I believe we're on the right path for that already, as a school, we've identified different areas where we can make our safety better here, and I think that we're pushing that ahead already. So we're ahead of the curve on that at least, and uh, yeah, once we dig into a little bit deeper in the comments stuff, and we can maybe iron out some more action items on that.
Just, I'm almost hesitant to bring this up, but there were two comments, and I'm sure they're from students, about teachers bullying students.
Yeah.
And that really got my, lit me up very quickly, uh, I can't. You know, we're trying to take care of bullying, and if we have staff that are doing it, well, if it's their perception of it, right?
Yeah.
It's super sensitive, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
I, I, and I, you know, there's, there's no explanation of what happened or anything else, and that's one of the things that I, I told Randy, I, when somebody says really don't like this or whatever, I would like to know why, I wish we could some way go back and find out why this is bad, so that we can do something about it.
That is a drawback to a blind survey like this.
Yes, it is.
But the information's there, and I think if we can compile all this, we can come up with a pathway to more focus our efforts.
Yeah.
And uh, again, I think we've been doing good, at least on the safety front of this, and it looks like the next two highest things were the, is it cricketing?
It's academic achievement and literacy.
Literacy, yeah, yeah. Literacy, yeah.
And then safety.
Yeah, can I comment on that safety issue?
Yep.
I think, I've been, I've been following the incident at the Luden School District.
Yeah.
And something that the legislature and then Thompson can just notice, something the legislature is, I think, going to take up in this session, or maybe it's the next session, is safety within bathrooms in schools.
Yeah.
And I think that's something that needs to be brought up to the legislature.
Yeah, that was the main, that it's about rape, the rape that happened in the bathroom, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
At the Luden School, yeah.
So, and then the other thing with the survey, it was difficult for me to follow the survey because I could only do that in the data time on my, on my phone. And so it was, it was difficult to follow. I'd like to sit down and have a look at all the documents across the, I mean, with all the documents in front of me, just to see what's going on. But I paid a lot of attention to what was really, what people were really dissatisfied by. And we could also judge from that where we could. However, just as an overview, you know, one of the things that, the one, the main reason why the board went with the survey was so that the board set out a five-year plan, our strategic plan for the district, and then that plan gets passed down to the superintendent, into the principal, into the teachers. Is that a correct understanding of how it was supposed to operate?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that was our overarching theme on it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just kind of at the beginning stages of this.
Information gathering stage, yeah.
Well, yeah, that sounds right, Morris.
Okay, just checking.
So how would we structure this moving forward? Would the board need to hold a special meeting, a work session, where we can all sit down with these packets and pull them apart?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And like Lisa's recommendation was to get our leadership team involved, which is obviously me and Steve and you're the teachers. And have them to help identify some of the major focus areas and propose some goals around some of those. And then, you know, those recommendations are being given to the board, and the board can give us more direction, and obviously, if there's a focus area that you guys have that we didn't identify, you know, let us know that, you know? But it is, as Morris said, it is ultimately the board will decide on how what these focus areas are and the vision, the overall vision, and give it to me as superintendent, me and my team will, it'll be our duty to implement and make an action, so.
So for action, go ahead, Morris.
I think if Principal Lynch can, can sit down with his leadership team, and then he comes with, with a certain recommendation from that leadership team, and then along with the board, maybe if he sits with us or he gives it to the superintendent, and so with that, also with ISS input, since we, I, I need to look over the contract, I'm not exactly sure how much or what we'll get to pay for, because ISS then sit down and sift through all of the material and say, "Look, this is what is being said," because that will be a lot easier than the board sitting down, survey and trying to, to read the tea leaves with the survey instead of having somebody who's qualified, who's done this before, and look at the results, and say, "Look, here, these are the areas that the people involved are concerned about, that the public really wants us to address." And then we go through that. That gets taken to the leadership team as well, with the, you know, with the teachers, and then we use that to come up with a five-year strategic plan.
Yes.
It'll be part of it, yes.
And one of, one of the monkey wrenches that's been thrown into this, I don't know if you noticed in the email, is Lisa Durham is leaving ISBA for another job. And I talked to her today, and that's next week when she leaves. So her replacement is supposed to get with us and do everything Morris has said, basically, so. I just don't know how quickly that will happen.
We can look at our contract, and if, I mean, we just have to see how far they were supposed to help us, otherwise we could ask for 300.
Yeah.
And I'm not joking about that, you know, it's not a joke.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we paid for a service, we'd like to receive the service.
Absolutely.
Randy, can you look into that contract and see what that is and get those answers to us emailed, please? Okay, all right, well, let's get that information and then action stuff. Let's create like an action step, plan of action. Okay. Item 10, old business, discuss policy 1500P.
Yeah.
This is the policy that Lee Morris wanted to put on, and it got pushed from the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Morris, did you want to say anything around this policy?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good policy for all board members to know. A few weeks ago, I tried to get something on the agenda, and, you know, we had two board members email and ask for some things to be included on the agenda, and it was not. You know, and so this is a policy that kind of directs us as to how the agenda's put together, what needs to be in there and things like that. And it's, it's good for everybody involved to know what's, I mean, how the agendas put together. You know, like for this meeting, how much input did the chair have? How much input did the superintendent have? The superintendent and the chair has to, have to come together and, and form the agenda. So, you know, there are things that, that the chair would like to be in there, there are certain things that the superintendent would like to be in there. But both the superintendent and the chair have to come together to make up the agenda.
Right, and if I, if I understand this correctly too, Morris, if any two board members request an item to be put on the agenda, then it shall be put on the agenda, correct?
Correct, or, or the chair.
Or the chair.
If it's something that goes on, there are no questions, there's no discussion, and goes on the agenda.
Unless it's not legal.
Unless it's against the law, right, yeah. But we would have to consider.
An agenda item be against the law?
It can break open meeting laws.
An agenda item?
If it's being asked to be discussed in open, in executive session, and it should be discussed in open meeting, then it can't be added to the agenda. Hey, it could be added to the open session, unfortunately.
We'll probably have to do some more discussion about this, but.
No, but I mean, if we're discussing personnel, if we're discussing personnel for any of, or land, or whatever, anything that falls under executive session, then that will go under executive session.
Right.
Right? So if a, if a school board member, if two school board members want a, to discuss purchasing land, right, then the, then the, either the superintendent or the board clerk will say, "Hey, guys, we can't discuss this in open session, it has to be discussed in, in executive session." Or if we want to talk to the attorney, then he'll say, "We can't talk to the attorney in open session, you have to speak to the attorney in the executive session," and it will go under executive session, but it will still be on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree that the way it's, the way I read this is if any two board members ask for something to put on the agenda, it goes on the agenda. So now, I guess when we get into the meeting...
If you want something on the agenda, it goes on the agenda.
Right, and I guess if we get into the meeting and we do something illegal, I guess we'll find out about it.
Well, it's my job to stop that before it happens, okay?
There's enough people over there that do it. And also, it just shows you, if you want to change the agenda, how you do that, how it's done before the meeting, if it's a regular board meeting, if it's a special meeting, how you change the agenda after it's been posted, and how you change the agenda after the meeting has started.
Right.
And it's just good for school board members to know this, because this happens quite often.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, sir?
No.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Morris.
You're welcome, Andy.
Okay, item 11. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Kay, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, thanks, Morris. All right, safe travels home, bye.
Thank you.